Wait for Bruce.
Call the order for a Watertown City Council work session for May twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five. Please rise while Councilman Shetty leads us in a quick prayer.
Heavenly Father, this day you've given us, we thank you for your blessings that you bestowed on us. And I just pray for wisdom for all the city entities today that are working through this week and in all their challenges, all the things that they're tasked with, we just pray give them wisdom and guidance, equal balances in all that they do. And and that you be glorified. We just ask your wisdom in this meeting tonight as well, in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Interim City Manager, Bob Zine.
Okay, Tupper?
Here.
Beeler?
Danforth?
Here.
Holene?
Here.
Jerrance? Absent?
Here.
Oh, he's here. Okay. Peters?
Here.
Shetty?
Here.
Thank you.
Quorum is established. Chair will entertain a motion to approve today's agenda. Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Danforth. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the agenda. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We have one item on our agenda, which is a presentation and discussion of downtown business district parking restriction options. To talk about said topic, we will go to our street superintendent, Rob Bainon.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for giving me the time to talk to you guys today about this. But I just want to do a short presentation and then talk to you a little bit about as we go. You guys can ask questions if the mayor's okay with that as we go, and we can answer that. Well, anyway, this is about the downtown sweeping that we do and the proposed parking restrictions. Little bit of history with downtown. Over the last several years, our street sweeping schedule included sweeping all the streets and avenues in the downtown business district every Thursday from three to seven a.m., May through October, we have scheduled. The street division has informed the public by utilizing public service announcements, flyers, social media and website of upcoming street sweeping. Although it is it is publicized not to park on the streets or avenues at those times, there are still motorists who continue to park in the way. Complaints stem from business owners, general public and our own staff because they're not able to do a good job with sweeping all the time when cars are in the way. Police Department and Street Division, we collaborated on this and proposed some solutions that will help us do a better job if 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 you guys agree with moving forward. As far as that goes, let's see. So I want to go through some options. This option one is one that police chief and assistant police chief and myself talked about as our preferred option. If if we put no parking signage down there, our ordinances currently allow us to put some teeth in it. With sweeping downtown right now, we can ask folks not to park there when we're going to, but we'll still have times when we'll have well over a hundred, not quite two hundred cars at times, but a hundred cars, hundred and sixty cars to go around, and it's hard for us to do a good job sweeping. We do the downtown, like I say, every other, well, it's every other Thursday starting in in May. And actually, this Thursday will be the first day we do completely do downtown. We'll start that at three a.m. is when we're scheduled to start that, but three to seven. In these options, we've been talking, I've been talking with staff about, you know, how much time we really need to complete this without too much extra fluff. And we figure from four to seven a.m. will definitely, we think it'll be enough time for two street sweepers to allow us to get the job done. But this would, option one, no parking on the streets or avenues in the downtown business district every Thursday from four to seven a.m., May through October. That's option one. Option two, that we came up with, no parking on downtown business district streets every Wednesday from four to seven a.m., May through October. And and no parking on the avenues from four to seven a.m. on Thursdays, May through October. Now, that option allows folks to be able to park around the corner. But the signage could be a little bit confusing for folks. The the streets, the signage that the signage that you see on the top that says Wednesdays, May through October, that would be for the streets downtown and every Thursday would be for the avenues. Those signs would go on their corresponding roadways. So either streets would have the Wednesdays and avenues would have the Thursdays, that we would do the work from four to seven. Let's see. And then, let's see, yeah. And then the other option, option three, is when we add, like the, we always do it on Thursdays. So that would be a little easier, I believe, for folks to get used to if we're, rather than doing Wednesdays and Thursdays. This here would allow just Thursdays, but the first and third Thursday of each month from four to seven a.m., May through October, that signage would be on streets. And then no parking on downtown business district avenues every second and fourth Thursday of each month, four to seven, May through October. That would be strictly on avenues in downtown. So some months have five, you know, five Thursdays. So those Thursdays, we won't do anything in this particular case. So they'd just be open. And option four is basically to leave it as as it is now, which, like I say, we do occasionally get complaints. It's pretty frustrating also for my staff because they do want to do a good job. And, you know, we do downtown more than anywhere just because we do it every other Thursday. And it's very clean when we're done, but yet there's there's areas where it's always the same cars. Obviously, people live down there, same cars, and it's always clogged up. Even though we put, sometimes we put no parking signs out there, cones with no parking, we definitely put out the schedule ahead of time. We put flyers on cars sometimes the night before. We've tried so many different things. We just have not had success.
Superintendent Bainon?
Yeah.
So you do all of the downtown business district now on Thursdays is typical? And would you would you and your crew prefer to continue to do it all in one day? Or are you okay? Because sometimes sending the same equipment downtown to do avenues on one day, streets on the other?
Right.
Is there a difference in effectiveness and or cost?
There there is. Well, I would I would say the the difference is the fact that that specific operators would have to come in Wednesday at three or four a.m. and then Thursday at four a.m. The rest of their work week would be coming in at seven o'clock. No, that's not a big deal to schedule that. It's it's just part of what we do. But as far as efficiencies, I would think doing it in one one shot would be more efficient. When you're downtown, you've made the trip down there. Once they get the initial cleaning done this coming Thursday, usually it's it's one hopper full of material. So they usually don't have to go back and forth. But if you take, they come in on Wednesday, they run all the streets, then they come on a Thursday and run all the avenues. You know, they're just making a trip down there again. You're not, you're not going to have a lot of extra waste there, I guess you would say, in time, but there will be some. If we do it on one day, it would be preferred for us. But I know this type of situation with the downtown folks that live there. No matter what would happen, no change would be the easiest for them, obviously, for the folks that live downtown. But to do a better job cleaning, this is something we need. I think some of the business owners that, you know, that we've gotten calls from at times want it done better. Of course, I think we all do. So.
And were the downtown business owners, were they contacted about this or?
Nobody was contacted yet. That's what we wanted to do is talk with you guys about this as an idea and see if it's anything that there's an appetite for. Because I think there, I think there would be, we can do a better job if we're able to put some teeth in this to where we could, you know, if people aren't following this, the the signage, you know, we can tick it. To have, to be able to tow, we would have to change the punishment area. We'd have to amend part of that in chapter nineteen ninety-nine, section nineteen ninety-nine oh one. But we would have to include or change, amend that to include language for towing. Now, the only way we'd end up towing, like I say down here, is if if you have anybody that is a repeat offender. You know, I think starting out, we would ask the PD to just do warnings, get people used to it. And after so much time, then tickets would happen. And if you have repeat offenders over and over and over, then you'd maybe consider towing. You know, in the wintertime, when we when we put out a snow alert, we have teeth in it because of the snow alert and what the ordinance says. So we're able to take it and tow. But and that part is covered under title eighteen in the ordinance. So.
All right. Councilman Beeler has a question.
Thank you. I just question regarding deliveries. I mean, if you, do we have a lot of early deliveries downtown? You know, that law, somebody go around the corner if they need to deliver something.
Question. I think those types of things, you know, the way I see it is, I think we probably overlook that and just, it's not going to happen all the time.
We got alleyways, I guess. But I, you know, just thinking, if if there's a, you know, fair amount of that happening, you know, it might be beneficial to have one street or avenue open so they can park. Just just a thought. Thank you.
Councilman Tupper?
Director Bainon, this is kind of off the street sweeping and into the snow removal. And I just want to kind of understand this. How do you feel when we do snow removals, when we do streets one day and avenues the next? How do you feel that's responded to? I mean, do you think a lot of people do move their car around the corner?
I think so. I, you know, we've talked about this in the past, and I I think there is areas where people do do have to move around the corner due to lack of space to park their vehicles.
Yeah, I know Councilman Shetty said in his neighborhood, a lot of that happens, you know, and it and I've worked with you on this project for quite a while. And I was I was kind of one that pushed back in two thousand thirteen, fourteen to to get downtown parking. So it was overnight. To me, it it still makes more sense to do streets on one night and avenues on another because it does give them that option. We're giving them an option, put it that way.
Yeah. So like, yeah, like option three was, I think, the original option that Randy, you and I had talked about, the first and third Thursdays and then on for for streets, and then the second, fourth Thursdays for avenues. Then it would allow folks to park around the corner. The big thing is there there is getting folks to understand, you know, what the first and third can be confusing to folk.
It's always that educational part. Mayor, could I ask Chief to me to come up here for a minute?
Put you on the spot.
I I know you guys have worked hand in hand on this. What what's, I just want to get your opinion, Chief. What you're, you know, I don't want to create something that's just going to create a ton of work where you can't do your actual job every day. So.
Well, experience has shown us that the doing one and the other, it's hard because people don't remember if it's Thursday or Wednesday. So we are a proponent of the one day. You just can't park there and go in the public parking lot. But either will work. The hard part is it's four o'clock in the morning, and what we do is usually start knocking on doors at four o'clock in the morning, trying to raise people out of bed to get their cars moved. And it takes a couple guys, four or five hours just to, you know, a police officer off the streets trying to get cars moved. So anything we do would help.
Yep.
Keeping it.
Like I say, I'm not not after it to create more work for, make it easier on one department and to create more work for the other department. But but we do need to do something. And and I think if you went first and second, or first and third and the second and fourth, I think that's going to be kind of confusing.
And it's a matter of how many signs do you want to put up on the streets of downtown? I mean, the more signs, pretty soon there's six signs on a pole and nobody knows.
It's going to boil down to a lot of public education, you know, and we need to lean on the the right people to do a lot of public education, you know, through our media. And I wish we could just get people to sign up for notifications would take care of a lot of it. But, you know, I mean, is your department willing to send out some more or put some warnings on cars for the first while and then?
Absolutely.
You know, if we put some teeth in it where you could tow, and that's the last thing I want to see is somebody's car get towed. But, you know, you can only bypass an ordinance so many times, and you got to learn the lesson the hard way. So.
One thing I would advise is if we do make, I I would advise making a new ordinance, not going with just simply the sign ordinance because it is only a fifteen dollar fine. And I mean, I'd pay fifteen dollars not to have to get out of bed.
Councilman Shetty?
Thank you, Mayor. So, Mr. Bainon, I guess, would, is it every Thursday you plan on doing all streets? If you had your way, would you do all streets and avenues on one day? Every, or is it, there would be some Thursdays where they won't be doing any street cleaning?
That that's exactly it. There'd be some Thursdays where we probably won't have to do any cleaning down there. The the intention behind that is to simplify for folks that live down there, just getting used to, don't park down there on Thursday because they're going to be sweeping. If we're behind schedule on other stuff, then we, it does allow us to have a a week to, or the next week to get the downtown clean. It would actually free up a little bit of time for our guys to do that. So. But you're right. It it it's not every Thursday that it would need to be swept.
Okay. Follow up? You bet. And then what about public parking then as far as? you know, in the wintertime, that's a little more of a can be a challenge depending how far, but how far is there? Maybe this is a loaded question, but how far, I mean, are in, you know, as far as looking at an overview map, is public parking even an option for folks? Or, you know, I guess, what is it, you know, is the longest walk for somebody, one block or, you know, we are talking in the summer months versus the winter months, but I guess just any thoughts on that?
We do have ten public parking lots downtown now. Um, you know, some folks won't be as close to a parking lot as others and they might have to walk three blocks. Um, yeah, it'd be nice to live right across the street from one and it won't be a problem, but, so there, there would be folks that would have to walk a few blocks.
Okay. Another question I guess would be notifications, you know, with snow removal, I get the notifications. And so that's always helped me than I knew when the, you know, that you're going to be doing a snow emergency and then I know to go to the street or the avenue. Um, it, would this be something that there'd be, could be notifications for folks?
We could, yeah, like the notify me, folks that could sign, or want to sign up for that. We could certainly have that so it triggers, you know, uh, every, I'm assuming we can put that so it triggers every Thursday or whatever days we would do. Yeah. Yep. Um, and that would help those folks. I, I think initially that's the other thing too, having a, a very good, um, um, I'm sorry. Anyway, a, a good, uh, campaign to put this out there to public. Um, you know, Kelly has some great ideas. I think we could get that information out to these folks in downtown, uh, the folks that live down there, um, asking for help from the owners of the, the apartment complexes and such. I think we could get that information out there and help. Plus the signs, the way we're looking, we'd have, uh, a minimum of two signs per block on each side. Um, you know, I do have the concern, you know, that Chief does too about having too many, too many signs. Um, that's a little bit of a concern too, you know? Um, we don't want to make the downtown ugly.
Right. Um, the, you know, the notification could, hopefully it would, you know, if they use it for the summertime for parking, for sweeping, then they might, then they can, then they get used to that program and use it for the wintertime because it could help train and just get using, using those resources. So this has potential to help even for the wintertime, I would think if more people start, you know, utilizing that resource. Uh, one comment on the parking thing is across the street to the west of, of our ministry building, the other morning I looked and I didn't count exactly, but, and they've got underground parking enough, I think for every unit. Um, if they're full, I think it might be short a little bit, but people are choosing to park outside. There's fifteen to twenty cars parked outside the other morning there, uh, on the street across from our building. I'm like, why don't they got underground parking? But I get it if they just want to rather park outside. So there are some areas where they have that option. They just aren't using that option. So just something to, just a little bit of data, I guess, for us to kind of take in consideration.
Councilman Danforth.
I'm excited that we're having this conversation because in a month and a half I'm off the council and been a topic here since I've ever been on the council. Um, I moved here in nineteen eighty-four and as soon as I realized there's an uptown, I, I've always heard about snow removal and, and street sweeping. So, yeah, I think the, the bottom line with this thing is we have to count on people. We, number one, people want a clean environment and we should, they, they deserve and should expect a clean environment. We need to be proud of, of our community. I do know, when you look at the uptown area, you know, we have non-bar restaurant businesses, we have bars, and then we have residents and that, the resident population is a lot higher today than it was five years ago. And it, in a lot of ways, what those people want for a solution is in conflict with the other one. You know, they, you know, we've had the issue and as Mr. Tupper said, we, for years, they had to have their cars gone. Well, now, now they can keep them overnight. So I, we've done work on it over the years, but I really think the bottom line is this. We have garbage delivery that happens every week and then every other week or whatever it is, you know, you've got your recyclables and people just need to learn. It, we just need to get it out there and learn and be responsible. A five or ten dollar ticket isn't probably going to deter a lot of people, but you know what, a twenty-five or thirty or thirty-five dollar ticket ongoingly, if that's what they choose to do, that is going to make a difference. And they're going to, someone's going to learn real quick. And, you know, we have the ability, I think, to have, you know, on the days that we're going to have these things, to have an automatic PSA go out to whomever that all goes out to, Facebook or, or to the radio stations or paper, whatever it is, doesn't matter. That can go out. Um, we've got a webpage that can be posted to. Very few of these people don't have access to the internet. They can get it if they have questions, but I, I don't believe in, I, I, I want to find something that accommodates what our need is, but yet accommodates those people that are frequently, frequenting our downtown. I think if we have it all on one night, I think that's going to be problematic. As much as I'd like, if I'm in your shoes, that's where I'd probably want to do it. Just get it done with. I think you're going to have to do, uh, you know, one on one night, one on the next night. Gives people a half a block to go so they can park around the corner. Uh, like I said, we've got a lot more residents now than we had before. Um, I don't like the idea that we would tow. I think that just takes up too much time and energy and resources that we don't need. Make the, make the penalty high enough that, that we're tolerant to start with and after that, we're not tolerant. Now they got to come and they got to pay a fine of whatever that number is. And it has to be such that it motivates them to want to move their vehicle accordingly. So, um, Chief, I do have a question. It, so let's just say, and I, this wouldn't happen to me, but let's just say it does. Let's say I get a ticket down there and I choose, choose not to pay it. What happens?
The city could issue a warrant for your arrest.
But do we?
No, currently we don't. We, uh, we do a good job of contacting people and tracking them down and convincing them to, to pay the fine, but right now we don't issue warrants for city parking fines.
Well, my recommendation on this is, because no matter what we do, we're going to have issues. I don't care. We're going to have, we've had them forever. Let's try to be more accommodating, as accommodating as we can. Alternate your days. You choose whether it's alternating weeks or if it's every week. That's up to you guys operationally as far as what's needed. But then I think we've got to do a job of communication. We need to be tolerant upfront where we're saying, you know, for that beginning timeframe, but then we have to do something with the penalty that makes it worth somebody's time to want to get up and go make sure they move their vehicle. That, that's where I'm at. Let's just, otherwise we're going to fight this. We're, I, it, I'll be dead and buried before this ever gets resolved. And, uh, so that, that's where I'm at on it.
Councilman Beeler.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm also glad to be a part of this very important discussion that we have here before they kick me out. Um, no, I just a couple of things. How, Chief, how often have we actually towed people because of the current ordinance? Any idea?
For sweet, street sweeping, never. For snow removal, quite often.
Yeah, I agree a hundred percent with what Mike said, which is not usually the case, but in this case I do. I think we need to put a little teeth into that thing. But just, just a thought I had too is, um, i- i- is maybe if we put some placards on some of the apartment entrances that would say, you know, have some signage that would say, move, move your damn car so you don't get, you know, a fine or towed. You, you know, you might want to choose a different language than, than that, but that might help a little bit on the apartment complexes for the residents there. But, uh, just a thought too would be, you know, I know in some instances, like when we changed to four-way stops downtown and changed the two-way, we did the intersection signs and that might be something you want to post in the intersections on the four ways downtown for the first, for a certain period of time to start out with. So folks see that when they're driving through. Uh, that might be a, a good thing for you to try too, but, uh, and I don't know if you'd want to post something in small print on the bottom that said, like if, like Mike had mentioned a thirty-five dollar fine, you know, that's, that, that to me would, I think, help.
Councilman Jerrons.
I'm extremely surprised that Danforth and Beeler agreed on something. Sorry, sorry. That's just a joke.
He's my best friend.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna expand on the questions or comments that, uh, um, Councilman Beeler had. Uh, a question for, um, uh, Chief Toomey, um, about how many doors do they need to knock on to wake people up? And would that be the same answer in the number of doors that we could put a fluorescent colored flyer taped on their doors that says, "Sweeping"? And, and I would, I would say you need to do it thirty hours ahead of time, the morning before. Uh, say s- s- sweeping will happen in downtown, uh, avenues and streets because that's more efficient for Rob's team and it's more efficient for Chief Stumey's team. Uh, and, and then like Bruce said, uh, thirty-five, fifty-dollar fine if, uh, if it, if, if it's not moved. And, and the, the, these questions about number of doors is, is, it, it comes from a lot of these twenty-something year olds, um, maybe not twenty and maybe a little over thirty, but a lot of them don't even have Facebook. A lot of them don't know what a radio station is. And a lot of them have never been on the city's website nor will they ever go there. So nowadays, when we look at marketing in our businesses, we have to really think and look outside the box. And I, I know sometimes, uh, we don't do that very easily, but that is something that I've had some, uh, some experience in and wondering what Chief Toomey thinks.
Sounds like we got our TikTok volunteer. As far as, uh, putting flyers on doors, we've done that. Uh, we've spent hours and hours and hours handing out flyers just to have people still parked in the way. So there's no easy solution. You're still going to have people that are going to park in the way. So it's just a matter of getting the roads clear for Rob. Uh, I do get complaints myself for beer bottles being broken in the street from over the weekend and things like that. And I, I think it's critically important that we do get these street sweepers through. I agree that probably avenues and streets is probably the better way to go. Um, we could try that and see how it goes with an educational campaign. Uh, we'll hand out flyers. We'll, the city hall have a sign out front? Can we? Yeah. So we could put signs up at city hall and blitz the media and we could do what we can do. And then just some warnings along the way and then eventually take it. It, it does take some time to get a fine, uh, through the, uh, bond and fine schedule. Uh, Lisa would have to recommend it to the judge and they'd, they'd review it and see if it's appropriate or not, but, um, but we still could go with our current ordinance right now. Did I answer any of your questions? Councilman?
The main question was how many doors are there to knock on and can, and do we have enough help? Doesn't have to be officers. I agree with you. They've got work to do on the streets. Uh, but do we have enough help, uh, to get that thing, that done, uh, once every two weeks on one Thursday, or excuse me, two Thursdays out of the month?
The cost alone, there's, uh, what do we have, fifteen hundred residents about uptown? So fifteen hundred flyers, getting printed those out every week, uh, that would, that would cost some money. But, um, yeah, I'm sure.
I guess I'm thinking the front door, I'm thinking the front door of an apartment building, which could handle, as in the one that's, uh, close to Councilman Shuddy's, um, place would, would handle about thirty or fifty of them right off the bat. But, um, you, I don't, I don't know much about marketing, but, uh, um, that's just my comment.
Councilman Peters.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of questions. One is, um, how many street sweepers do we even have? How many do we, maybe you said this earlier?
Um, no, currently we have three and we, but we have the, uh, two that run all the time. The third one, we have run, running during, uh, spring and the fall for leaf cleanup and then, and the spring for all the sand and stuff. And then we keep that as a spare when we need that, uh, uh, for other times.
Have we, um, done any research on how many businesses open before seven AM downtown?
I have not. Um, you know, based on, eh, we do have the gym downtown. That's, that's always occupied, but, um, you know, it, it's pretty quiet downtown. I would say, you get around even eight, nine o'clock. Would that seem accurate?
Yeah.
You know, it's, um, but I think folks that are parking downtown on the street, of course, a lot of those folks are going to go to work at eight o'clock and you probably lose some of those, but then the business owners start to roll in to open their businesses up and.
Yep. My, my, I had to interrupt you, Rob, but my fear here is on option one, four to seven, can we shrink that four to seven down? So it's like four to six? Because seven in the summertime is bright and people are active. And so my fear is I, I get, I agree with what everybody said here, but my fear would be if I'm a business owner in downtown, Watertown, I open at six thirty on, or six on the summer days. I don't know what business would do that, but if my customers have to park three blocks away, it's not too conducive to business. That would be my fear.
Okay.
So it'd be nice just to know that, I guess. Um, otherwise I agree with everyone, what's been said. Um, you know, the gym downtown, I go there in the mornings and it is, I mean, there are eight cars, but it's way busier in the summertime than it is the wintertime too. So just something to think about.
Back to you, Superintendent.
All right. Let's see. I kind of got all over, uh, the board here on this, but anyway, the ordinance is depending on what we would, uh, plan on doing. Um, there would, there would need to be some changes. I think Chief is on it, uh, has a good point, depending on if we would want it to be more than, uh, what, a fifteen dollar fine? Uh, possibly creating a new ordinance that would pertain to this. Uh, Lisa and I talked a little bit today too. Um, if it was a situation where there was any appetite for towing, then we would have to change that up and, uh, the punishment part.
I would highly recommend putting in the ordinance, the ability to tow, uh, to cover it, just to cover, just in case a situation does come up. Um, we have a towing policy that requires us to make, try and make contact, uh, do our due diligence. We're just, uh, we have to have a good reason to, to tow a vehicle before we do. So we're not towing vehicles unless we have to, as a last resort.
Um, let's see here. And then of course, this is a map. Um, the streets and avenues that you see in the downtown area that we sweep, uh, every other Thursday. So we try to get cleared down, uh, by Jenkins in between and then, um, uh, block, basically a block south of the courthouse, uh, on Broadway and Maple. Um, we did dig into what it would cost to do this as far as materials and we figured we'd be around eleven thousand bucks. That's broke down pretty good, actually. Doesn't include any labor or anything like that. Um, summary, let's see. Signage will likely be the key to our success, uh, if we plan on doing this. As, as you guys know, I mean, we've, we've, uh, it's been a constant battle ever since I've been over there with getting downtown clean enough. Um, when I started over there, it was only getting cleaned as often as the rest of the city. But, uh, when Mayor Karen was over here, she asked us to do it more often. We set some, we planned on doing it every, uh, every other week and that's what we do there in the summer. And it does make a big difference when we have Thursday Night Live, when it was out in the streets and stuff like that. Uh, it did make a big difference cleaning that area and, um, it does help when the cars are gone. Uh, right now, the, the operators do weave around vehicles and we've been fortunate. I've had no reports from my staff or anybody that any cars have been hit. And to be honest, I'm actually very surprised. Kudos to, to the operators. So, um, but yeah, if we were to do something, PD, you know, starting out with the warning tickets and then after some time giving full-blown parking tickets. And then if we do do something with the towing, like Chief said, uh, at least putting it in there. I, I agree with him. If, if it's something we would have to use, the tool would be there to use, but the plan would not to be using it, using it unless you absolutely had to. Um, um, and that's it.
I'll open it up for questions and comments. Superintendent, one just thought that I had is, would it work to possibly, if you, if we did these streets versus avenues, um, why do one in the first and third week and one in the second and fourth? I mean, I, I could see some possible efficiency or at least maybe it's easier if you live downtown to say, oh, this is the week of street cleaning, so I better park here on a Wednesday and here on a Thursday?
Yeah, I think with option two, let's see, is it option two here?
Is that option two that had that?
Well, option two has Wednesdays and Thursdays, uh, from four to Well, option two has Wednesdays and Thursdays, uh, from four to seven. So it'd be, that would actually take, you'd have two, two days that it would mess everything up. If you did first and third, second, and fourth Thursday.
Okay, so option two does have that der- all during one week, okay?
Yeah, it does, it's, um, but it does actually, let's see here, streets every Wednesday and then avenues every Thursday. Um, and actually that, that would be on a rotation too. That's something I didn't put in there. Um, this here, I feel is the, the best, second best option there is. First and third, it's always on a Thursday, so at least that part's not screwing everybody up. Uh, if you do it on Wednesday and a Thursday, that, that could be problematic. But this here is, when folks read this, if they know, like, uh, all the streets would have the top sign downtown, the one that says first and third, and then all the avenues would have the second and fourth. That's the way the signage would be laid out. So the streets, the s- they'd still get hit, uh, every other week basically, other than where you have five, five weeks. You'd be, um, you'd be skipping a week there. Where currently we don't, we just go every two weeks. There would be a little bit less sweeping being done downtown. What do we have, like, we have, uh, during the summer, May through October, I, two or three months, I'd have five Thursdays, I believe.
So your preferences in order would be one, three, then two?
Say that again?
Your preferences in order would be one, three, then two?
Then two, and that, two, I was just looking at that.
If you left it with two, that leaves every Thursday, if you don't have to sweep.
Right.
At least they're in a rhythm. And if they're not parked on those, who cares, right?
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I think, uh, just thinking here if that's, every Wednesday from four to seven, every Thursday from four to seven. And I don't have that marked down as every, it's still, the, this is, this is a, the clear option we started with, but after we started talking about other options, the one where every Thursday, that Chief and I talked about, this option is good, but it would, uh, every Thursday, people would not be able to park downtown from four to six or four to seven, whatever we would determine would be enough time. Uh, two hours is, I think, with the two rooms, is possible. It'd be pushing it once in a while, we'd probably have certain streets that maybe won't get hit. The guys do a good job of focusing on the streets that have cars parked on them all the time, we try to get those right away. If you take, uh, what is it, Second Street West, south of FD1, that street never has cars parked on it in the morning at all. So you can leave that street like dead last. Um, you know, some of the Kemp and First South, First North, you know, you're always gonna have something on, on those.
Okay, I'm gonna ask Council to, um, do a favor, help guide the discussion with me. So first off, uh, this is a proposal brought by the, uh, Street Department. Does anyone have a problem with the overall concept of we're gonna deal with, with cleaning? Okay, then if so, it appears to me we have two issues to decide as a council or to suggest as a council. Number one would be the schedule and number two would be the ordinance revision. So I would ask Council to, let's focus upon one or the other, deal with that and then move on to the other one. So that we're not talking all over up and down. So my request would probably, I, I'm okay with either dealing with the scheduling first or the ordinance first. I don't really care. Does anyone have a preference? Okay, we're gonna talk with, we're gonna talk about the scheduling first. So no talk about towing fines, banging on doors or anything like that yet. We're just talking about the scheduling, so Councilman Tupper?
So I do kinda got a little heart, heartburn with the first and third and the second and the fourth. Personally myself, you know, every other week they pick up recyclables in the garbage and personally myself, I can never keep track of which one I'm on. I gotta look at the neighbors, see if they took their brown can out. So I think that's gonna be confusing to a lot of people. I, I think the fact of just no parking on the streets and however you set it up, Thursdays and the other one on Wednesdays, whatever, I think would be the simplest place, because like I say myself, I just, I, I gotta look out and see what, when the brown cans going out. So I know I can put my blue one and my green one out every week, but.
Um, can I say something there?
Yeah.
Um, you know, something I was thinking about too, uh, let's see, I'm trying to remember how many Thursdays, uh, we have throughout the summer that we sweep that, it's, it's a lot. Um, would it be possible to back that off to once a month or once every three weeks instead of every other week? In this case, I guess you do end up if you're not, if you're not sweeping the fifth Thursday. But just another option to throw out there. Um, if you did back it off to once a month, you know, the first Wednesday of each month, no parking from four to six on streets and the first Thursday, or maybe the third Thursday of each month, no parking on avenues from four to six AM. I don't know, just throwing it out.
I would say unless you're going to advocate for that, I would prefer, let's just stick with what you brought.
I'll second that, uh, I'll second Rob's comments. Go to once a month, this is such a pain in the butt for the citizens. I know it needs to be cleaned, but i- it's a, a pain for the police department, it's a pain for the street department. Go, I, I'll, I'll support once a month, Rob.
Uh, we'll go to Councilman Shuddy.
So yeah, per Councilman Peters' observation about businesses in the mornings, if that even changes down the road and some start to open up earlier. If you did it more times, like, for example, in this case here, where if it's, um, two Thursdays and two Wednesdays, let's just say, then you could do four to six a little more legitimate, because you're not doing everything, you're just doing the avenues, you're just doing the streets. So that would actually help the four to six thought process and get it all done, because you're not doing everything. So I can see the, the, the concept of the time thing, however, as Councilman Jern said, you know, how many times we gotta be down there doing the street sweeping, so. But that was just, my thought was just on the, the four to six, that would help if we split it up, it helps the four to six part of it.
Councilman Peters?
I'm gonna throw one more wrench into things. Have you thought about Fridays? And the reason I say that is because Thursday Night Live happens that evening and then you'd be able to, uh, run the sweeper through on Friday mornings downtown.
Um, we haven't due the fact that we switched to four tens a couple of years ago in the summer, but.
I thought I had a really good idea there.
Well, it is a great idea. It is a good idea. Yeah, I would have a couple mad guys probably.
Councilman Tupper? Oh, Councilman Danforth.
Rob, I, I think you, I think you sweep your, your streets because they're needed, not because what's convenient or, or what's, it either is needed or it's not. We're doing it twice a week now. If it's not needed twice a week, then, then don't do it. That, that's, to me, that's your call. I don't know whether it's needed once a week, once every other week, once a month. So I, I disagree with the notion that we make a decision it's okay to do it once a week. It might be windy around here sometimes and stuff blows in and around downtown, which you could go downtown now, right now and, and you're gonna see stuff, even if you cleaned up this morning, you're gonna see stuff out there. So we're, I think we're overcomplicating this thing. And that is, go to a schedule that works, you've been doing it once, uh, once every other week. If that's what you wanna go to, do it. Work with the people that, but the people that are choosing to, and I'm not talking about the business people, but the people that are living down here. It is, i- it's a cultural thing for them as to why they're living down here. So they have to accept their responsibility, live in this part, part of their community. And that is to take care of things. And part of taking care of things is, your dog poops, you pick it up. And if you gotta move your car, you move your car. That's part of living down here. And so, you know, again, I'm not gonna tell you what days to do it, that, that's your guys' call, because I don't know how badly it's needed. Um, that, that's your deal. I, I think it's really, I think you'd be wrong for us as a council to say, let's do it once a month. Let's do it once a summer then. I don't know that, right? I mean, I don't know. So I think that would be wrong. I think you gotta decide based on need. I do like the idea that Wednesdays and Thursdays and it, and you know what? If you decide that doesn't need it this Thursday or this Wednesday, don't go do it. Worst case that happens is somebody parked around the corner. That's where I'm at.
Um, you know, I think that, uh, the, if we're looking at, and I, I should have put this, I should add on that option two though. When you're looking at, uh, Wednesdays and Thursdays, yes, it does allow people to park down around the corner, but the way this is stated right now is that it'd be every Wednesday and every Thursday. So, so, and I think Kyle, you're right too, that I think we could get it within a two-hour window. Um, if we always make sure that our staff is doing a good job hitting the main streets right away, um, having all of our equipment, of course, prepped the night before and load it up with water and everything, so they jump in the trucks and go.
Councilman Peters?
Last thing, I promise. Um, it, it makes sense to me to do it like twice a month. Um, once a month, uh, the reason I have a problem with that is because if three people forget to park or somewhere else and you gotta go around them, then that one spot is dirty for the whole month. And so if you could catch it as many times as possible, I think that that makes sense. I just, I'd love to shorten that, that time window a bit. That, that seven AM in the summertime just seems like it's eight AM in the wintertime. And, uh, I guess that would be my only sticking point. But yeah, those are my comments, thank you.
Councilman Beeler?
Uh, thanks Mayor. I really do think it'd make sense too, in, in some sort of font on the bottom of those signs to, you know, to explain what the penalty is. I don't know if you'd wanna say, you know, violators may be towed. I, I don't know if you'd wanna go that far, but that would certainly scare the hell out of some folks, you know? Um, otherwise if nothing else, if we raise it to whatever, I don't know, who arrives at the number for the fine? Who decides that?
We make the recommendation and the judge approves it or not.
Okay, you know, but I do absolutely think we need more teeth. And if you had that on the bottom of that sign that said thirty-five-dollar fine or whatever that, that number is, I think that would be helpful. But I do, again, I, I hope everybody understood what I was talking about on the four-way stops. I know there's quite a few of them, but just for a couple of weeks at the beginning of this whole thing, you know how we position them right in the middle of the four-way, like we did when we made all those changes? We probably still have some of that stuff to do that with, e- except you'd have to change out the signs. But I think that would be a good educator for the public.
Superintendent Bynan, um, is once a month adequate for the downtown business district?
I personally don't think so.
Okay, fair enough, that's it, uh, we'll move on. Um, then the, I'm blanking on the next question that I had then. I would say I am of the mindset, kind of of Councilman Danforth, I don't sweep your, I don't sweep the streets. Um, I'll field the complaints, but if this is something you feel strongly about, if you're gonna back option one, I will support that choice, uh, for you and your crew. And we can deal with that, because if that's the, if that's what you think is the best option and you're the one who, you and your crew are the ones that live it and do it and see it firsthand. So I would support that. Um, I don't, I'm not enough of an expert to counter the suggestion on this one. Councilman Beeler?
Uh, thanks again, Mayor. I, I still, I would be a little concerned, like I mentioned before, about deliveries. Uh, and, and perhaps you'd wanna discuss that with some of the folks downtown? Because if you can't park anywhere downtown worth it, you know, you're gonna have to find an alley or something to park if you got deliveries. And that could be a, a fair distance to, to move product through. So I mean, if it's not an issue, if, if folks aren't doing those deliveries in the morning like that, then I guess it's probably okay. But, um, that, for me, I would, i- if that's the case, I would vote for option two.
Um, Superintendent Bynan, um, go back to the previous slide, I think, the one with language at the bottom. Okay, I just wanna make something clear. So the way that that's worded now, and this is the English grammarian in me being nerdy, but the way that that's reading now is there's no street, street sweeping at all the entire downtown business district, the entire month, if there's a fifth Thursday in that month. I assume what you're, what you're intending on saying is there's no street sweeping the, the week of the, of a fifth Thursday? Okay. Okay.
Too long a month, so we're gonna take it all off.
Okay. Um, okay, Council, anyone have anything last to say on the scheduling? I don't know if there's a consensus on this. Is there a consensus? I think. Okay, so. Yeah, I think, uh, I, I, what I'm hearing is I've got at least three on this side of the table who like option two. Correct? Yeah, and then, and then Councilman Beeler. Um, I've gotta say, option two was my initial favorite, but I'm still willing to basically back whatever you're choosing, but.
Mayor, if I may?
Yep.
I was just talking with Rob, would it be better for you guys if we went to the downtown businesses and pulled them during business hours and, and then bring back what the, the consensus is with the business owners?
Yep. All right, uh, I just want some conversation on the ordinance. Does anyone have a problem with at least putting the possibility of towing in the ordinance?
I can make a comment before you make a decision. Uh, snowbirds work great, it's a forty-dollar fine, if it's not paid within seventy-two dollars, it doubles and, uh, you, you can be towed. Um, so if it's left there for more than twenty-four hours, we go back and we tow. I would suggest following that same suit, uh, because I think towing is a big deterrent.
Okay, so just, Chief, just to be clear, are you suggesting, so like, let's say someone doesn't move their car the first time, you get a warning or whatever, the second time, there's just a fine and then the third time it would be towed or?
Yeah, I, I would suggest forty-dollar fine doubles in seventy-two hours if it's not paid. If it's left there for more than twenty-four hours, we'll go back and tow it. Um, if it's a repeat offender that we keep having the same issues with after notifying, notifying, then, then we'll tow. But we have to have that wording in the nineteenth chapter.
Okay, so that's the suggestion, is a forty-dollar fine with towing if not moved within seventy-two hours? That's the suggestion from the?
Twenty-four hours.
Forty-dollar fine if they pay it within the first seventy-two hours, after seventy-two hours.
Oh yeah, then that's towed.
And if it's not moved within twenty-four hours, and I think that might give us an opportunity to go back and catch that area the second day, even if you're doing avenues, you can swing in there. Councilman Danforth?
Now we have to go back and be checking cars and see if they're still there and make sure they were still there twenty-four, forty-eight, seventy-two hours later. Let's just leave it as a tow, at our discretion as to i- if we do. But you establish a fine, if you wanna give a warning to start with, fine, go for the warnings. Establish your, your dollar amount for a fine. If you wa- uh, if you wanna use the same logic as, as is currently being done with snowbirds. I mean, 'cause let's be honest, that the relative it is, it's the same issue, it's just dirt or snow, right? Um, but, you know, snow becomes a safety issue, it really does. Uh, this really isn't a, a safety issue, it's a, it's a quality of life, community issue on how our community looks. So I, I, you know, let's not go there, I, we need to have it in there, I do agree with that. But establish your fine, not paid in, whatever the hours are, it doubles. Um, you guys decide if and when you ever tow. I, I would hope that that would be rare if ever that it happens. Uh, if we got a vehicle that for whatever reason seems like it's abandoned down there, then yep, get it out of there. But that, that's where I'm at. I just think, people are gonna learn really quick when it comes, they get their first ticket of forty bucks.
Councilman Tupper?
So that's what I'd like to see too, is, is the towing part more your discretion? Yeah, if it's the same car every week or, you know, every other week, or it's been ticketed four times in the summer and you decide it's, you know, enough is enough. Uh, you know, we get to that, that question of abandoned vehicles. I remember when we first changed the parking and, and, uh, we followed some of the parking lots and watched them for a long time and we determined that. and watched them for a long time, and we determined that some of those vehicles have been there for a long time. It was, it was, uh, free public storage is what it was on some of them, so, and that had to be addressed, so. And we don't want that on our streets, and, and that could be a possibility right now, that some of them hardly ever get moved, so.
We do have an ordinance for twenty-four hour parking.
Yeah.
So, after twenty-four hours, you're subject to tow anyway, which is the eighteenth section, which is already allows us to tow.
Yep, thank you.
Councilman Beeler?
Well, I think you, you need to, I think it'd be a great idea to post these, and I'm just gonna throw this out. Would it make sense to put a small supplement? I, I know it's more signage, but a smaller one underneath that states some of that information? And the reason I say that is because if you ever decide to change that, I don't know if you put a sticker over the, the ones we've got, or, or you just put new ones up that would put whatever changes you had on there.
Yes, um, uh, some of the research I did online of other communities did have signage below, like you're talking about, that had, you know, ordinance numbers, fine dollar, you know, what the fine was, that type of stuff, 'cause that does change occasionally, so. That'd be a good idea, we keep our main signs like such, and then add a small sign below.
All right, so, generally speaking, what I'm getting from the council is option two is our preferred option, but you said that you would go down to talk to Downtown Business owners. I will just say, last week, I was in a group meeting with all the Downtown Business owners. That could also be a fast way of getting some level of consensus, and I'd be happy to help talk to a few of them, because I have appointments already with several of them, so I could help with that, to see if there's a strong desire with something else. But otherwise, council's option is two, and I also get from council that we are okay with forty dollars and the possibility of towing. Am I wrong on any of that? All right, anything else that you need from us?
I think that does it, I have a lot of notes here, so. I've been jotting a lot of information.
Councilman Jerns, I'm not sure if you're still on, I think so, did you have anything to add? I'm not sure, he did text that he had a call, but I couldn't, I couldn't tell, but, uh.
I'm good with, I'm good with what Rob and the chief decided.
Okay. Council, anything else? All right. All right, thank you, gentlemen. Do we have any future council items right ahead, or, we'll go Councilman Tupper?
I would like to see if I can get enough support for the June ninth, or, excuse me, when is our next meeting? Is that right, June ninth?
Well, next week.
Next week's our next council meeting, excuse me, that's right, next, we're section. If we entertain the idea of working with the gentleman that's putting in the egg hanger at the airport, as far as the assessment, um, the way we left it before, the assessment would be paid up front. I've had quite a few discussions with him, he come out with some great points. I think it's gonna be hard to, to move forward with the other three available hanger areas unless we look at possibly extending that instead of making them pay it all up front, so. Would I get support from another councilman to have that put on the agenda?
Yeah, we have at least two councilmen who would be willing to second that.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And Councilman Peters and Councilman Beeler, so. Yeah, if we can put that on, whenever the language would be crafted and ready, if it happens to be by Monday, but if not, I think it can wait until the meeting in June. Any other future, what was that, Attorney Carrico? Uh, I, I, I don't know what else you have that you're working on, so I don't wanna, I don't think that this needs to take priority over some other things. Like, I know that there are some, I know that there are some other things that you are working on that are important and incredibly timely that need to be resolved, but this one seems like it could wait a couple weeks. But I would say definitely no, no later than the first meeting in June. And any other future council items right ahead? Interim City Manager Bob Zine, do you have anything to report? All right, um, we can do public comment, is anyone here for public comment? I don't see anyone, there's no reason to go into executive session, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Peters. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, the motion is to adjourn, all the, oh, Councilman.
Could I make just a statement? We, just to remind folks that, uh, I think it's Wednesday, is it ten-thirty AM, Justin? That we have, I think it's ten, ten-thirty AM on Wednesday, they're going to have the ribbon cutting for the pickleball courts. So, if you can, come and join us.
All right. And, uh, hearing no, Councilman Tupper?
Sorry about that. Chief Toomey, maybe you wanna talk about, uh, the, the award that our, their code enforcement officer received?
Yeah, it was, it's a big honor, so the state S D M L awarded Terry Ingles, Code Enforcement Officer of the State for the year, so it's incredible honor. We went to Pierre and, uh, we had a luncheon and a nice awards ceremony, and it was well deserved, Terry. Terry works hard, as you guys know, so.
He does an excellent job, so I just wanted to make, make that a little more public, so thank you.
All right, seeing no further comments, uh, we have no, anyway, motion was to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries.